Was that.
Yeah.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Board of Supervisors Budget Work Session in beautiful King William County. Can you call, well, no, do the roll call.
Mr. Miskowski?
Yeah.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yeah.
Mr. Garber?
Yeah.
Mr. Moran?
Here.
Chairman Hodges?
Here.
All right, gentlemen, have you reviewed the meeting agenda and are there any changes or additions?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Garber?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski?
Aye.
Chairman Hodges?
Aye. Budget work session matters, personal property, vehicle tax, on this one guy.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board.
Evening.
So I sent, you want to know about the personal property values? That's the first, that's the first thing, yeah. So, a while back, I sent the email with the personal property values, a sample of twenty vehicles in our jurisdiction, and the average value went down twenty-two percent. So we're still working on the annual DMV download, and then we have to get it to J.D. Power to get the values. These we looked up in book, because they, they had to be manually looked at. Other jurisdictions have done a sample, and Orange County had a nineteen percent decrease, Manassas had a twenty percent decrease, Louvanna had a twenty-six percent decrease, Hanover had a twenty-five percent decrease.
What is, what would be the deadline on these, as when they will actually say today, we're counting the, these values? And when it will not reduce anymore?
As soon as we get the J.D. Power values back. I mean, I have to have the personal.
They're done, is what you're saying?
No, we haven't finished the DMV download yet, so I can't even send the file to J.D. Power until that is done.
Okay, so they send them back to you individually?
We send a whole file of everything in the personal, all the vehicles in personal property. We send it in a file to J.D. Power. They put in the value, and then they send it back to us, and we download it into our system, our software.
Okay.
And then it gets a little checked that, you know, it was valued.
Right, but you don't know when that will occur, when you'll get it back?
It takes about a week to get it back. So Ms. Hayden worked from home today. She gets three pages done when she's home. That'd be twenty-two, there's twenty-six. So she may work from home on Wednesday and Monday next week. So I hope by the first week of April, or the second week of April, I can get the file out to J.D. Power.
So we would be looking at maybe the end of April before we.
Absolutely, by the end of April.
So we're looking at leaving it as is for now.
Of course, setting, yeah, three, three sixty-five? What was, do you remember what the increase was?
I think it was, on the average, like thirty percent.
Thirty?
Yeah.
So it dropped.
Yeah, I mean, and what you passed last August was to lower the rate by just a dollar, just for that year. So right now, the personal property tax rate is like three sixty-five, unless you change it, would be three sixty-five.
And I think we proposed revenues on that rate.
Yeah. So.
Any questions? Is?
Yeah.
All right. I don't think you need to sit down.
Yeah, I think I was next, too.
And this is on a proposed assessive position?
Uh huh. Oh. Well, Mr. Ashcraft presented his budget proposal for my office with a reassessor. He lumped all the salaries in together for the deputy, so I don't know how much the proposal is for the reassessor. Um, I mean, I do think this is something the board needs to consider, just for the main reason, that there's only five companies in the state certified to do a mass reassessment. You just paid three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a reassessment, you wait four years, that could be a half million dollars. That's a huge expense, and you're at the mercy of these companies, and they give it four years if no one bids, or you get one bidder, you're kind of stuck. So I think it's something, just the uncertainty of the future that the county really does need to consider. If you want to do it in my office, you want to do it outside my office, that's a board decision, but it's something that, as a resident, I would hope that you would be considering, because it is a huge risk and a huge expense. So I proposed a budget. You know, when I did my presentation about creating it, you know, it will create revenue, because all the building permits will be picked up, not just every four years during a reassessment. So of all the garages, additions, pools, paving, lane clearing, all that would be picked up. And, you know, by code, the county could do a reassessment every other year. And you could increase values one percent every other year. And, you know, that would be a huge cash generator. So, I mean, there's a lot of reasons to do it. Now, the budget proposed, I did not think was extravagant. Um, but what Mr. Ashcraft presented to the board, I cannot create the assessor office for what he proposed.
Say that again?
I cannot create an assessment office or hire an assessor and train him on the track to being a certified assessor for what he proposed.
I read your proposal. I'm, this is one board member here only. Uh, I don't see training you to train an assessor. I really am.
I'm not saying I would have to be trained, but there's two basic classes, one for just regular assessment practices and one for mass appraisal that I think I should take, so I'd be, you know, I would know the work that he's doing, and I could supervise it properly. Um, there's like seven or eight classes that he would have, an assessor would have to take to be certified. But I would certainly think I would have to take at least those two classes to know what he's doing and make sure he's doing it adequately.
Mr. Ashcraft, what amount of funding for the assessor is in?
For the position.
In, in her, uh, budget?
The salary is seventy-five, seventy-five thousand?
I proposed fifty-five thousand for assessor.
Maybe seventy-five county benefits.
Seventy-five what?
It'd be seventy-five, including, I guess, all your benefits and everything. Fifty-five plus.
Do you have this report? I'm looking at it, it's thirty-six, seventy-four, seventy-seven.
Okay, that's where, that's where I got the number.
It's thirty-six.
And you said thirty-six?
It's thirty-six.
This fuckers, if we didn't create this in your department, would we get anything from the comp board to help with this position, or I don't?
Um.
Asking.
Back from two thousand eight recession, the General Assembly cut funding to the Compensation Board to Reuniversities offices. Right now, there's a hundred, over a hundred Commissioner of Revenue deputies who should be funded by the comp board that are not. If I get a new position, I would have to go on that line, and as funding comes available, it would be possible.
Thank you.
But I did want to bring something up. In the budget that I looked at online, there was no line item for telephones, telecommunications for my office. And I'm hoping that is just an oversight, because they take a certain amount each month on that.
Mr. Chairman, has it been moved to Y.T.?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we consolidated those charges under a different department, so it's.
Oh, okay.
Zeroed out in your budget, but it exists.
Okay, good, so I'm still gonna have telephone. So. Yeah, okay, thank goodness. Would that include a cell phone for the reassessor, because he will be out in the field?
It does, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So the, the seventy-four thousand dollar salary for the assessor, it looks like it's separated. Uh, you have social security, you have everything else, uh, healthcare and everything, so that's seventy-four thousand dollars pay. That's not, uh, the benefits we have listed separately. But you're saying you budgeted fifty-five thousand dollars, so that's the difference.
I think she said the seventy-four include. It would be fifty-five salary and then social security, health insurance.
Benefit, what you just read.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, but you have, you have all this broken down separately.
Yeah.
Uh, FICA, retirement, VRS, group insurance, on, a, a, all that. So you're saying the seventy-four thousand, uh, salary doesn't, that's, that's not the base salary, and then you added up all these benefits? That's what it looks like?
Well, the, the seventy-four is just the difference year over year. That's taking into account all of the pluses and minuses that are going from, um.
Yeah.
You know, FY twenty-three to the, to the recommendation, so that, that number doesn't.
Right.
Represent.
Position.
Position, no, that's just, that's just the difference year over year. Um, so, no, we need to, we need to find the actual, uh.
Yeah. I was just, I was just wondering what number was actually entered into, to your budget, kind of like you wanted to know for that position?
Well, that's correct. Yeah, that's, no, it. It was intended to be fifty-five plus benefits.
Okay.
Seventy-five thousand is not even. So it's in that sixty thousand increase? That's correct, yes.
So the classification would be a deputy? I, I don't see a separate, uh, salary.
He don't.
Salaries, wages.
Yeah, we didn't, we did not distinguish it.
Okay.
We can break it out if the position is eventually approved, but right now, it's just lumped in with the deputy.
I got it.
So the timeline for a brand-new individual college graduate going through all of these courses is roughly what?
Three to four years.
Whoa.
I did, I, I think I sent to um, the clerk this course is required. They, they'd have to take all those courses, and they're working and taking these courses. They're like week-long classes. You have to take like a test in a test environment, because this is a national certification. It's not, so.
We've got.
Yeah, so.
Classes, but at the bottom, you've got thirty hours of instruct.
Yeah, so I guess that's ten classes there?
Oh.
So. But all those classes, and then you have this one, though, the checkmark of the different classes.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I would not be comfortable supervising assessor and not having one-on-one and, um, you know, fundamentals of real property appraisal.
Sure.
And, um, what was it? Three thirty-one, mass appraisal practices? I mean, I think I would need to take those in order to supervise somebody and make sure they're doing them right.
One-on-one and three thirty-one?
Yeah, I would need to take those classes. I mean, I would feel like I need to take those to be comfortable supervising. And I'm not saying that they would take all these classes in one year, but two or three classes a year. Like, the one-on-one and the one-on-two are like four hundred dollars or five hundred dollars. The other ones are between eight hundred and eleven hundred dollars, and they might involve travel.
And you, you switched back to the assessor now?
What?
What you're talking about, you've switched back to the assessor, not you?
Yeah, not me. I would take, I would want to take two classes.
And how long would that take?
I think the one-on-one class is like three days. If, the one-on-one and the one-on-two are available online with the Virginia State Tax Department.
Three thirty-one?
Yeah. And three thirty-one, all the other classes I looked at were between like seven hundred and eleven hundred dollars, and they might involve travel. But the intro ones are available online at considerable less expense, yeah, because there's no travel involved.
And the person that we hired one would be able to work while they're taking.
Yeah, they would, yeah, they would absolutely be working while they're doing this, absolutely.
Do you have a breakdown of what the total of the classes, like you said, I guess it wouldn't really work out, maybe per year, or is it in your budget?
Well, I put a five thousand dollar training budget, because if I took two classes at a thousand dollars, he took two classes at a thousand dollars, if there's any travel involved, and he would also have to take like deputy classes, like rules and responsibilities of the Commissioner of Revenue's Office, understanding the Code of Virginia, land use, you know, all those things he would have to be. So there's a lot of training involved. So I would picture, I would hire an assessor, get them training, work out a training program for them, you know, create a work plan for them, and then in two years, have like a contractor come back and do a market appraisal analysis, have the reassessor sit with him while he's doing that and learn about doing a market analysis. And then in four years, you know, he would be, you know, qualified to do it again, or three years. And the code only says every property has to be visited once every six years. We have five districts, you know, twelve thousand parcels. He could visit three parcels a year, or three thousand parcels a year. You know, and then we'd be on track for a four-year plan.
Would we have some kind of a guarantee, like if we sent this person on all this training, and they finally got it, and then they had the position, if they decided to quit after just a month?
We would have to have an employment contract.
Right, that's what I said, make them pay it back.
You definitely need an employment contract, and after he met certain goals, you know, he would be paid more, or you could withhold the pay in a certain way until, you know.
But we'd have to take it forward if you wanted to collect the position by the way.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, okay. Uh, your estimate on how long?
Three to four years. I mean, I, I had several conversations with the property unit at the State Tax Department.
So that I understand, it's, it's several on here, and you said two, two at a time?
Well, I'm thinking the first year, he would just take two of those classes. He'd be doing all the new construction, the permits, taking the Commissioner of Revenue classes on, you know, the Code of Virginia, the responsibilities of the Commissioner of Revenue's Office, because he would still be my deputy, and he had to follow those rules.
So even though he doesn't have these qualifying courses, he can do the work?
He, yeah, he can go out and do new construction. He can go out and, you know, do building permits. All those tables are in our computer right now. I could go out and do new construction if I had the time and measure a house and take photos. And I have, and my deputy has. But that's time-consuming, and not only would he be out there doing new construction, he would be taking pictures of the neighborhoods. If there's a new house built in Kennington, well, maybe he takes pictures of that whole section of Kennington, then they have that visit. I mean, so he would be doing more in the field than just new construction. He'd also be doing permits and taking pictures of other things, like if he sees a driveway is being cut in a, you know, field, and maybe like, well, then that, you know, if it's, you know, a vacant parcel, a hundred, vacant parcel, and they have a driveway, and they cleared it for a home site, well, there's forty thousand dollars that goes on that is property card then. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that would be beneficial to have someone regularly traveling the county, looking for these things. If someone put up a garage without a permit, well, we find out.
Is there a particular college track that you would look for to go into a job like this?
I would need someone strong in math skills. Would be the biggest thing I would look for. But it's not.
Calculator does that.
What?
A calculator will do that.
Yes, but you would have to create different formulas and stuff when you're setting the tables in the computer, so you know how to calculate a square percentage of a house under fifteen hundred square feet, between fifteen hundred and three thousand square feet, you know, between three thousand to six thousand square feet. The value, uh, you know, timber, if it's pine, if it's hardwood. There's a lot of other things that are working within the computer software that spits out the value. So right now, a new house is built, we do the scratch, we take the measurements, it calculates the square footage, it looks at the building grade, it looks at, you know, at, you know, how many bathrooms it has, if it has central air, shelter hut, and all those programs are, you know, we don't see, but they calculate the value of the house.
So, so what is your total AS over and above what the budget proposal that was recommended to us?
Um. My request was for, well, I didn't have all of those numbers in for FICA, retirement, all of those numbers. And I didn't know what to put for, um, the phones, but I had two ninety-four, three forty-one. I, because I took out twenty thousand for part-time house, I took out eight thousand dollars for contractor label to do the new construction. So, but I didn't know how to calculate FICA, retirement, hospital, medical plans, group insurance, disability, short-term disability, unemployment, internal workers' comp.
Did y'all put any of that in?
Yeah, they.
All, all that is in the final, uh, final budget.
Just supplement there, yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, uh, in regards to training, it was hard to define how much would, you would do in one year, and how soon this person could be hired. So and I know that, you know, the two thousand represents her whole department. So I would expect that if the person was hired reasonably early in the budget year, there would be a cost to adjust that, and we've done that with other departments when, uh, when we've needed a special type of.
Would it have been a one-time cost, which could go from on assignment to?
That's right, that's right. So, uh, that, that is probably low according to, uh, you know, the request, but we just had to pick a number that looked reasonable, and that's what, that's what it was.
In listening, I don't, I don't, don't think that you've included the vehicle, and it sounds like there were requirements.
We have fleet vehicles, we think, that would be able to, to do that in the short term, and then, uh, we'll, we'll see where we are when, uh, when we need to, uh, trade or.
I mean, so that might be expensive with that. I, I would, um, estimate it at, um, forty percent or sixty percent of what a full-time inspector goes out. I would think the assessor would be out two or three days a week, so maybe fifty percent of what a full-time inspector, you know, uses the vehicle for to do his inspections throughout the county.
Yeah, that's, the fuel might be a little low as well.
Yeah.
But again, it was hard to calculate twelve months. Uh, we were thinking nine or less, quite frankly.
So, so your salary?
Yeah.
You want, uh, an additional five thousand dollars over, over your?
Over what the comp board would pay.
The comp, what was your, uh, request?
My request was everything what the comp board would pay, plus an extra five thousand dollars a year. There are several Commissioner of Revenue's offices that get paid just what the comp board gets paid, and they don't have to do real estate. Real estate is not in their office. Land use, business license, mail tax, those are all county ordinances that my office administers. Other Commissioner of Revenue's offices don't have that.
So the comp board, are you saying that your request, did that include the, that eighty-eight thousand number, did that include the additional five thousand that you're asking for now?
I think it was, um, five thousand over. Well, the comp board is gonna pay eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six for next year.
Okay.
And then it would be five thousand over that.
To take on the assessor.
Oh, actually, it's, um, six thousand over. Because I had three, eight thirty-seven, he had eight thirty-six. And I want to do a good job if I do this. I mean, and it's gonna be a lot of extra work. If I hadn't taken real estate back, I would still be making the same amount of money, and I'd have my weekends free. So you know, I took on a lot of extra work with the reassessment. I took a lot of extra work on when I took real estate back. And so I'm not willing to do any more extra work.
That's where all that comes in, in everything else that might come about in most job descriptions.
Yeah. Yes, but.
End up having to do more than what you originally thought.
Yeah. But I'm, this would take, be taking on additional work that I don't have right now.
And we do want you to accomplish it. We do not want to fail on you.
I don't, I don't think it's unreasonable personally.
But, uh, it is a big investment. We want it to work. And it would help bring in stuff, but it would also add stuff like.
Yeah, I mean, and, I mean, I've talked with, you know, Mr. Hydren, Mr. Ashcraft about this. It is less expensive to start it under me and then move it out and have it under the county. But if you wanted to start it right now on your own, you're gonna pay a hundred and ten or a hundred and twenty for assessor and forty thousand for his assistant. So that assistant wouldn't be reimbursed by the comp board. And right now, I have that person doing property transfers and, you know, administering land use at thirty-six thousand a year, and half of that is paid by the comp board, so.
We, we understand that, uh.
So.
And I think the best, even though I've been back and forth on it some.
Yeah.
In my mind, or where it should be, I, I think it's probably the best way to start it off.
I mean, and then, you know, in two years, we, you know, you can always reevaluate it. I mean, it's not permanent. If it's not working out, then move it on out, get a certified assessor and take, make that person his assistant. I mean, it, it's, you know, I'm relatively new to this, but I've brought up a lot on it, and it seems, and the property tax unit, they are really encouraging Commissioner's Office to do this hybrid kind of model, because they are also concerned about the number of certified assessors. You know, Bright Minds is not certified anymore, so, and they're out of, so, you know, they are also concerned, because it is a big uncertainty for localities. And it is a huge expense.
I think he's done a good job this year on this, uh, I'm impressed, and even the outcome, it seems to be. And we don't want to get, we're, we're so far behind the equalization.
No, I mean, I, um, I mean, I talked with Mr. Pearson today, Chris, Pearson today. I mean, he picks up my calls, he answers. Um, his son Brandon will be here tomorrow for the, um, first Board of Equalization hearings. I'm gonna be here, I'm gonna be at all the Board of Equalization, well, not, I'm gonna be at all of them, not next week, because I'll be out of town, but someone in my office is gonna be prepared to sit in here. I mean, I talked to two Board of Equalization members, and they both told me they would be more comfortable if someone in my office was there. Um, Mr. Tassanarius was in my office, and I told him how, you know, if they want it, you know, change of value, I can do the calculations right there and say, well, if we do this, we do that, you know, because it's all formula-driven. Um, so, I mean, and there's not that many appeals for eight years.
How many, how many, but more?
I think there's thirty maybe together. And some people have multiple properties. So, I mean, I like to, they're starting off with the easy ones, so I'm looking at those and um, you know, so I'm ready for tomorrow and then for Thursday night. And then the most difficult ones. Now, Fred Pearson will be here for the commercial appeal. He'll absolutely be here for that. He's been very responsive, even after, you know, he moved out of here, I'll call him. And actually, I called him today, because there was a property that had a lot of things missing, and he said, well, Karina, we need to go out and fix that. And I'm like, yes, we do. And so I'll give it to Brandon tomorrow, and he'll go back out and do it. So he's been, he's been real good.
So how many of those properties that are being appealed are commercial properties?
Just one, I think.
Just one?
Yeah. Yeah. But, and several.
They all appeal.
Yes. Yeah.
Normally, most of your, your commercial ones.
That's, that's really good.
And several of the meetings with Mr. Pearson, we had the reassessment, regular meetings. He said, once it goes to the Board of Equalization, no matter what changes they make, it's gonna be less than one percent of the real estate values. It may go up one percent, it might go down one percent. And so it's not gonna be significant amount when you're planning your budgets. You know, and he said that repeatedly. So.
If you've handled some, I know one that you did.
Yeah.
That I sent.
Yeah, at any time, if there is an error on the cart, the square footage is wrong, we don't have that set. I don't have a finished basement. I can fix an error. If someone says, well, my house, I can't sell it for three hundred thousand dollars, let the county buy it, if they think it's worth three hundred thousand dollars, or I haven't had upkeep on my house. I haven't had upkeep on my house for two years, I've been sick. Well, that's a value. You know, um, difference. And I cannot do anything about that. But the other ones, I, you know, Chris, I've called a few over and I've talked to people, I return their calls and done what I can. But if it's a question about value, I'm like, no, no can do.
If we give you the go-ahead tonight, when, when do we have to have someone in place to carry out this plan?
Well, I, I mean, if, if you approve it, I hope I would have someone July first.
But we have to wait till one July for the new budget?
For the new budget.
Not, not necessarily.
I, if you have the budget approved, then I can advertise it, hire someone in June and they can start July first. Or, you know, if you wanted to allocate, you know, an extra, you know, you know, four thousand dollars so they could start in June, you could do that.
Well, this, this is very important to get it done.
And the main thing I just think about is there's five companies that do this. In four years, what if it's six hundred thousand dollars and you got one better? What are you gonna do? You're gonna choke on it, you're gonna pay?
Been, we've been dealing with that for a long time, dealing with that. I don't know why, couldn't you advertise now?
Sure.
Uh, and just see, I mean, you, you don't have to put a deadline on interviews, but.
Yeah. I mean, there are several, I mean, I read that Virginia Association of Assessing Officers newsletter today. Gloucester, James City, Collotan, and those are the, the local ones that have real estate appraisers advertised continuously.
And over this month.
Um, yeah, I don't know about that, but it's just, it's, you know, a lot of times you see a job and it says apply by date and this, all they all just say continuous.
Probably the, the Gloucester offer at the PDC level, can we?
Well, I think, but, well, first of all, I think that's, that's, it's not necessarily an offer of staff level support. Like what they're, what they're offering is, is.
Expertise?
Right. Uh, they, they've got a system that they've built that works really well for them, that they think other people can use and have it work really well for them too. Um, and I think that's, that's what Gloucester is offering is um, availing their, their system to our staff.
Yeah.
So that they can take the information that they gather, put it into the system and it will.
Yeah.
It's certainly a resource that we should consider combining into what we're gonna try to do here.
Sure, sure. But I don't, I don't think it affects really the, the decision that we're making here is, is bringing on a staff person to do the work that, if, if the Gloucester thinks.
I just wanna say, when, uh, if there's an assessor out there traveling the county, he's gonna be collecting data that we don't have right now. Now, Vision is a very expensive real estate program and has a lot of bills and whistles that you're paying for that we're not using. And the biggest one that I think about is neighborhoods. I mean, because in two years, the homes in Kennington may be increasing a lot more than the ones at Central Garage or McCully Park. And you can have different percentage increases in different neighborhoods. Some neighborhoods might be in decline. But we have none of that information on our cards right now. And on the Vision, you know, website portal that we have access to, there's a lot of training modules that the assessor will have to also take to tell them, you know, show them, you know, how to put these formulas in the computer when you do do a reassessment. So it can calculate houses or buildings at the new values. So it's, there's a lot of things that can be helpful to the county. You know, when you do this. And the property internet tax, they've offered me a lot of help. So if there was a commercial property that we wanted to assess, I could call and someone from the state tax department would come out and help. So.
Alright. Gentlemen, you're, you're going ahead to advertise.
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay. Alright, and so then that would include my stipend to do all this? I mean, because I'm not gonna hire somebody if I'm not in doing all this work, cause there's a lot of stuff involved.
I don't have a problem with you going. Do you, do we need them up with? We need to talk, right?
I know, I guess you're not really voting on the budget now.
No.
Yeah, but you could, you say this.
We're agreeing.
Okay. Okay. Alright, that would be great. I mean, I think the county needs, just needs to do something. And if next year you decide to move it out of my office, it's not like, you know, my feelings. So, I mean, but it's something as a county resident, I think needs to be done. I really, really do.
You got room?
What?
You got room for one more person?
Well, that office right there is vacant. That's what.
That'll be, that office is for the Director of Economic Development. Uh-oh. But we can, we'll, we'll be moving some other administrative offices uh, out of here to the fire station. So then we'll be running.
Okay, yeah. Like that office that Sally had before that might come available. Yeah, okay. I mean, I mean, I have an extra desk right now when I have the part-time help, they use that. But this is gonna be like a professional. And if someone, like right now, anybody who comes in, I have to take them into my office because that's the only private office, you know? So the person, you know, if someone comes in about their property, they would need, I think we could always go in the conference room too. So, if it's valuable or coming here, so.
Need to work there.
Yeah, I can work in. Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah. I missed that. Animal shelter?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. I would uh, ask you for the purposes of discussion that you turn to page fifty-eight. That's the animal shelter budget, if you have your budget with you. Uh, we'll be referring to that a little bit in this uh, in this presentation. I come before you this evening because I just wanted to uh, update you on the status of the animal shelter and remind everyone that we are in a partnership with King and Queen County. We have been since two thousand and seven. And that partnership uh, from the beginning and, and up to now is uh, in theory a fifty-fifty uh, partnership. Uh, I say that because whenever there is funding involved uh, in order to execute any type of uh, increases, uh, it takes both uh, King and Queen and King William to uh, to make that happen unless one of the other jurisdictions decide that it's important enough that they would want to kick in more funds than what would be above the fifty-fifty. So I've listed uh, four areas that I wanna speak briefly about tonight and certainly answer any questions as we go along. Uh, when we're talking about the FY twenty-three budget, that's the one that we're in right now. Uh, there's been a capital item that's been lingering around for several months now, maybe even uh, one, well, beyond a year. And that's the uh, generator that is uh, that needs to be installed at the animal shelter. Uh, we have an estimate of fifty-seven thousand uh, for that uh, a piece of equipment. King and Queen has agreed to use its animal shelter fund balance, which they have, uh, which is seventeen thousand dollars. And a, a fund balance is established in the animal shelter in large part because of donations that come in that uh, are unexpended at the end of the year. But it also uh, uh, can be other excess that may uh, that they may get a grant or uh, or something like that. So that's divided fifty-fifty. And so, if you divide it fifty-fifty, uh, King and Queen still has seventeen thousand of their funds uh, to uh, contribute toward the project. We have funds in our capital budget uh, to contribute. And once the final price is determined for the generator uh, when we go out and get ready to purchase, um, King and Queen would be billed the difference um, to make up uh, to make up that shortfall that might exist. We have how much in the capital? We have forty-three. We could pay for it, close to all of it if you added, you know, there, there's some, but that's not fifty-fifty. So.
So, are, are they agreeing to pay their half?
They understand uh, that uh, that they're, that they would be expecting to pay the difference. I can't say it's an agreement at this point. But they do know that we would be sending them a bill once we get the final numbers. So if that number fifty-seven sticks and we're at uh, twenty-eight-five together, then they have seventeen already. So the difference of, what, eleven or so would be billed to them. That's on that project.
Mr. Chairman, I remember back in the past, I was trying to see if he remembered. We, we're told that I thought all the departments that needed generators, we had to spend a bunch. Maybe Steve would remember that we got all these. So we took wheels off some of them, had them mounted and maybe that was just for the water systems. I thought it was for all our buildings.
One for the schools a while ago.
It wasn't for.
Don't remember one.
It wasn't for over there. They've, they've been utilizing a, a portable generator, which is a county portable generator that just gets run around to wherever it's needed in an emergency. And one, it doesn't fully generate enough power.
I was wondering, I thought we've taken care of all that, but okay, thank you.
So this proposed generator will do a whole building for.
That's correct.
Twenty-four hours.
I'm not sure what the cap, capacity length is, but it is for the, enough power for the whole generator. I mean, it's a, it's a diesel.
Okay.
Could you, could you find out exactly what, what we're getting for it on that bid? Cause that's.
I know these aren't your standard, you know, certainly not Honda's, not even Generex. They're, they're big things that can generate a lot of power, but. We, um, I can definitely send you the, the bid. We got three quotes. And this one, all of them require some electrical work to be done over there to install the transfer switch and some other stuff. Um, this one's including those things. It was the best option.
Yeah, let's see.
But it's gonna be fixed and not mobile.
Correct.
Kind of too bad because if we needed it somewhere else, it could be cut over to something.
Well, it's set up for, it could do automatic, that's why.
Sure.
Can't move it.
I guess we can use the one that was there temporarily now, we could use.
We are using, not as big. Doesn't sound like it's really big enough to do all that, cause it's not doing a whole building.
Well, if, if it's wired, if it's already wired for a generator, why would you have to do the uh, the transfer switch and all that?
There's a transfer switch there, but um, I don't know. Have to read the, the quote again, but when they brought over the contractors to price it, all of them said, you're gonna need to do this.
You need a bigger.
You need a whatever.
Alright.
Okay. The next item is the operations budget, just generally that has been proposed. I've heard from the county administrator and King and Queen that they have included two hundred thousand dollars for their operation. We have in, we have recommended two thirteen, five seventy-three in ours. So if we're to keep a fifty-fifty uh, formula, we would be billing them the difference of thirteen, five, seven, three. I've not received any confirmation that they would be uh, willing to do anything more than, than the two hundred thousand. So, I just call that to your attention. No decisions need to be made tonight, but I'm just letting you know that we do, if we're going to do what's in the operations budget, we have a deficit of thirteen thousand dollars.
I have a question to, to the director. Dealing with King and Queen, have, have they not maxed out about our shelter on occasion? I mean, our, our shared shelter from distant animals that they bring, we, yet they don't.
With those large animal seizures, yeah.
And we don't uh, and they don't wanna pay half. I, I don't quite understand that.
We're dealing with, with the new county administrator who I, you know, I think is very good. I think that she's got a great reputation. She's also an attorney. Um, I, I think we've done a pretty good job, all of us. Steve and Natasha and Lori have been involved in two or three different meetings with her to this point. Uh, I just think it's a matter of uh, first of all, she came down and visited uh, the shelter and, and she understands the needs. Uh, but she has a board, she has to answer to. And um, how that translates into actual uh, budget numbers, that's, that's where it is. Uh, we, I think we've done a good job of demonstrating the present condition and the operations of the shelter. So.
So we, I still think they should be doing a percent, no matter what the big.
We, uh, we had that agreement shared with us several months ago. And they are supposed to, so far as capital also, it's supposed to be equal, isn't it?
Well, again, supposed to and doing is, is something totally different.
So what are the chances if we send them this bill, that, that they're even gonna honor it?
Fifty-fifty like any other I know?
There is a clause in that agreement that states that either county can.
Up down.
Well, yeah, but either county can like add on to the shelter without the other county agreeing to it or having paid for it or establish more funding for a certain program without the other county agreeing to it. So there is that, but there is also the opt-out.
But that's not my idea of sharing a children.
No, it's not.
Because the responsibility of the day-to-day management is with King and Queen. That's in the agreement. So I would hope that they would respect the numbers that we send.
Plus it was, it was a factor in there, if I remember correctly, like a three percent.
Administration.
Yeah.
So.
So are they paying that? The three percent? They are.
And uh, and there was also some, early on, the, you know, with the construction of the, of the facility that I think that, that is passed now. Uh, since then. So.
So I guess their proposed budget is saying they're proposing two hundred. They haven't passed there yet either, but we're gonna.
That's correct.
Ask for the extra thirteen.
Yes. They know, they know that we're asking for two thirteen. But she, she was pretty confident that two hundred thousand is where they were gonna end up. We can always ask again. Then we will.
And that's total, correct. You know why? I'm jumping to the next paragraph.
Yeah. Well, yes. Because they, that is clear in our communication to me is that there is, there will be no funds from King and Queen for capital uh, in this budget. And our capital ask uh, to you, as I presented last week, is the sick room, the sick room equipment and the smoke detection and fire alarm system.
Which is split at one hundred and twenty-one thousand.
A piece, that's correct. That's correct.
So if we, if we call all that, which is two hundred and forty-some thousand.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Like Lori said, the sick room, if that's what we wanna do, I mean, that, that was sort of our ideal, right? So.
Well, um, I think it, it's initiated here, no question about that. Um.
It came from management of the animal shelter.
Yeah, there's a.
I was gonna say it's a regulatory compliance issue, but.
Tool.
So it's not something that, like you were saying, it's not something that we just wanted to do. It's something that we're.
We have to.
Right.
So.
So, the next paragraph, what are the chances of them sitting down to renegotiate when, when they don't wanna pay their fair share in that?
Well, they have expressed a willingness to revisit the service agreement. But conversations have also lent itself to the, they're keeping their options open during their discussions up there as to what other uh, uh, options they might have. And that could be uh, partnering with somebody else or starting their own. Uh, I, I don't know. I wouldn't think they would do that.
That because they don't wanna.
Well, I agree. I agree. I'm just saying, I don't know, uh, I don't, I don't know where, what their thinking is, but uh, Miss Sade has said that uh, she's willing to sit down and, and look at the agreement. And that's what we intend to do whenever we can uh, get through her honeymoon period. You know, she's only been there six months or so, maybe less. So, or uh. Get through her honeymoon period. You know, she's only been there six months or so, maybe less, so, or uh.
Do you know how their capital expenditures look? I mean, I don't know if you've happened to.
I've not reviewed their budget, no. All I've gotten is the communication that I've made reference to in here.
Okay, thanks.
So.
I do think we need to. Get them, get them over here, maybe not necessarily in front of us, but just have you guys sit down with with their people and and I mean. They've got to acknowledge that. They can. Their people are using the shelter, alright, and and providing a lot of services to King and Queen from that shelter, and they need to acknowledge that and and not keep leaning on the fact that, well, it's not in King and Queen, so they can just kind of. Ignore this this situation that they they have for a long time, so. Um, you know. It becomes an imperative at a certain point that. They hold this agreement.
That's right.
Uh, because otherwise, you know, we're left either, for the most part, we just haven't done the things that we've needed to do, right? Uh, that's what, that's what ends up happening, is that the service writ large suffers because they're not willing to discuss. Yeah, yeah, I mean, there anytime something comes up as a need, their their answer is no, and and. That makes basically turns our answer into no, because. The boards by and large that I've been on have said that if King and Queen is not going to fund a request, then we. Can't, you know. Correct.
But twenty two.
Hanging up on all that.
The biggest problem is the sick room is is a fundamental uh requirement, period.
Right.
So we have to do it. To be in compliance.
Correct.
Well, exactly. So we've got an agreement that we're gonna manage the thing and be responsible for regulatory compliance, and now we've got to spend money to gain compliance and our partners.
We've been very. Or help me with this, but we've been very fortunate that the state has not come in.
Right.
And and gave us any kind of a of a violation. Because we don't have it.
We go to both counties.
But there's an expectation, yes, sir. There's an expectation that something like this would be in a. Modern. Animal shelter. Otherwise, it just compounds your problems when you have sick animals. Within. Five or six feet of well animals. It's it's only natural that uh. There, there's gonna be problems with that.
Ashcraft, I understand that. I just don't wanna take all of.
No, I I understand. I understand. I'm I'm not, you know, we'll revisit the capital at some other point in our our whole budget discussions, but. But I just want to let you know where King and Queen was, because we haven't had that discussion uh, maybe for a while, at least not since I've been here, I don't think. So that's the up to date as to where we're, as to where.
Again, it isn't the first time we've we've been here.
Yeah.
Alright, but we just, we've not gotten anywhere with them before, and and it's time to maybe press the issue a little bit.
Sure.
Um. Because, yeah, they they are, they're holding back in in the particular area.
I don't know who their chairman is. His chairman, maybe, maybe I can. We can get you to make a phone call to their chairman, just just to kind of see what the feel of their board is, you know, there's ways to support. Other than just being at the county administrator or the uh. Or the staff level.
I can purchase.
Yeah, so. Okay.
All right, Ms. Bet said, I mean, well, I'm just gonna point out, Ms. Miss Bet said we, they use it. Sometimes in the past, it seems more than they're half, so, and like I said, we don't charge them anymore, but we should bring that up.
Right. Right, so I mean, we should bring that up too, maybe.
Right. And we understand that, Jim, since I've been with you all these twelve years.
Have we offered to go to one of their board meetings and have one of you gentlemen? Face to face, brief them on all the nuances, because I I feel like. Some of the communication flow is getting dropped between you, Miss Say, and the board. I just.
I think they know. We wouldn't mind doing that, Mr. Uh, Mr. Moore, and I think what sometimes what you end up doing is being exactly as this conversation is, it it it's obvious as to where. The funding gap is. And. To surpass their staff and even. Their finance people, it's it's a difficult ask, but we are engaged in more conversations with with this county administrator than we were with the last one. Uh, on this subject. Um.
I think I think they're very well aware of which is the question.
Oh, is that all enough for the animal shelter?
Yes.
Okay.
Somebody's got any question back to work.
And are you up or is?
I am. I'm going to start the conversation and then I'm gonna weigh heavy on Steve. Uh, because he uh, he does have a. Every day, he's grasping the split levy formula. Uh. In a way that we all were trying to learn something as we go along with him, but I just want to remind you and. And um, and general public that one of the. Uh, concepts of the of the budget ask that I proposed. Was to begin a process uh in which. The uh. Overtures. For the non-profit property taxes. Would be captured and returned. To the board supervisors. For its use. For recreation and. Uh. Economic development. Um, right now, those overages are going uh to the uh, the school division. Uh, the school division still has to come back to the board to ask for. Uh, to spend that money. Um. But. We feel like that. It's a trend. That probably is is. There's needs everywhere. But I see this board, along with the E D A. Wanting to put more resources into recreation and into economic development that maybe you had before. And. The. The funds, the non-property funds, particularly the food and beverage tax. That's going straight to education. Is a natural fund. To be used. For other things within general government. Particularly. Recreation. And economic development. Now, I know this is a uh, a reverse of what uh, of what we've done, probably since the split levy was uh. Uh, legislation was adopted. But I think that's what I heard this board discuss. When you had your work sessions within the last couple. Of months. If I misread it, I apologize. But I know there's, there's even been discussion that maybe all of those non. Property taxes. Should come back to the board. And not go. To the school division. We didn't propose that. I think that deserves research, that deserves what the reaction would be. If you have to replace school funding as a result of it, where would that come from? I mean, there's a lot of things that would go in that. But for F Y twenty four. If this is a philosophy of this board. To move in that direction. Then this seems like a logical first step. To do that. And I believe Mr. Hud didn't. Really, really well thought out memorandum to you over the weekend. Uh, gave you options as to where that would rest. And it appears like option number three fits best. In what we have proposed. And granted, that money is not budgeted for. Right now. It uh, it would, it would be. One against every financial principle to try to estimate that we're gonna have an overage. Because we might not. Might have a revenue shortage. You just don't know. Uh, but I just know the trends that we follow. Particularly in the food and beverage area. And and we have added restaurants and we're about to add uh, at least two more within the next year, year and a half. Um. Economic development. And that goes together. Um. Even though. You can always make an argument. That the fund education is the right thing to do. And uh. I feel very strongly about that, as I know that you do. So that's kind of where we are. Um. Certainly open it up for discussion from from all of you, and then again, I would turn to Steve to uh. To kind of see what kind of a of a test. Of the split levy legislation this would create. As a result, if you did take the measure to uh, to capture those overage.
Again?
Yeah.
Sure. And and the reason that I remain skeptical. Is because, again. Anytime. That you allocate money that comes from. That that's collected only in the special taxing districts to any purpose other than schools. You are funding an activity. Out of the general fund, and anytime you're funding an activity out of the general fund with those revenues. It's suppressing the general fundraiser. Which means. That your. The whole, the whole purpose of the split levy legislation. Was. That no West Point money went to King William schools. And no King William money went to West Point schools.
Right.
That was the, that was the entire purpose. Um, as as you know. The last remaining vestige of one of the authors of that legislation. That was the purpose. Um, I know we can, we can. Read about intent, but I'm just here to tell you that was the purpose. Full stop. Um. So. I agree that it places unique and unfortunate restrictions on how we can raise revenue on the general fund side. Meaning that. We don't immediately benefit from growth in those funds we just discussed, meaning that you add new restaurants, you add new industry, commercial business, anything that. Grows. Those revenues, the only way to capture that revenue is to do like what we're proposing in this budget this year to readjust the rate. Um. I just, I I still, and and Steve, I would agree, grasp grasp the issue uh quite well. Um, for me, it's again, it comes back to the to the philosophical reason that the split levy legislation exists. Uh, and the reason that it became a problem in the first place, which again, was because we were. Uh. Allocating. All of our B poll money to the general fund. Prior to. Uh, twenty thirteen. Uh, and if you look at the tax rate from twenty thirteen, I want to say we were at like, I think the overall tax rate was uh eighty one. Something like that, and but only twenty eight cents of that was on the general fund. All of the rest of it was on. Um. The school fund, which means that districts two to five were paying. An inordinate load. Compared to. The town. And what we discovered was that. With the town getting their own B poll, which they do, alright? That they were basically getting a double dip. Into that, because us assigning all of the B poll funds to the general fund dropped the general fund rate, the town was getting their own B poll. Alright? When you allocate all of that funding to schools. Again, it created a a a. Different balance in the rate. Now, of course, the the action that we took that I didn't agree with was doing away with the. Concept of the split levy for a year, and then there's, because there's, there's a different way you can do it. You could always, well, now that there's legislation, you couldn't, but. Um, prior to that, you could um. Collect. A single tax, alright, from everyone. Under a singular singular tax rate, and even from the town. But then you had to allocate. A per rad a share of that back to the town. Which. Fundamentally could work, but the town didn't like it. And it wasn't what we had been doing, so that's why we sought. Legislative. Allowance to do the split left.
And of course, supportive to be negotiated also.
Right, 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 right.
So have have you read the, I'm sure you have.
Yes.
With Steve sent us. So option three doesn't seem to have that effect. That that you just described.
To me, it still does. To me, to fix the the problem to such that one exists and the overages on the those revenues is we've got to be more aggressive in our revenue projections. And try to capture the growth um on, you know, ahead of time. Rather than on the back end, so that we can set an accurate real estate rate to fund. What schools need. What the general fund needs. Um. Rather than trying to make up that balance on the back end.
Well, to a certain degree, that's that's what the schools are doing now. They take their projection, say, meals tax, it says four hundred and twenty thousand. They're basing their budget on that. And any overage. Their overage is is folding into their.
We're we're building that budget and how we allocate. We're doing those projections, not that. So that's what I'm saying is to me, to fix the the problem is it exists, or the proposed solution to that is we we get more aggressive on the. You try to more accurately capture. We've been very conservative on those projections in the past. Um, and that's. That's okay, but what it does is it has the effect of building a larger school reserve fund than they they, you know, probably need to have, alright? Um. So if we. Try to be a little bit more aggressive, without being reckless, obviously, but we can be a little bit more aggressive on these revenue projections, especially with meals tax and things like that, that we're seeing steady growth in. With no reason to project that the, you know, that's going to. In any way crater, you know, in fact, we've just talked about the fact that we're we're adding to it as we sit right now, so. Why not? Project. More than a conservative amount of growth in that revenue stream allocated to schools and adjust the rate. When you're doing the budget. So that it's more balanced. That to me. Keeps. More true with with both the intent and the spirit of the split levy legislation. Dave?
I'm not gonna disagree, and that's what I had written, was that. The the most true way to do it is exactly what he said.
Which is option three.
No, no, no.
No.
No, option two, that's the truest to the split levy. Intent. Purpose. Because that is the only way that you're never gonna have. Special tester, tax district money going towards something that. Uh, West Point would otherwise be paying into. But. There are other ways, uh, I I want to clarify. Like he said. If there's a a fund balance being built up. And the schools restricted fund. Maybe we can do something about that right now. Maybe we can agree that there's, they've got too much, so.
It's three point nine.
Well. I think on the reserve side is about three million dollars, and in the restricted side is about nine hundred thousand. And. That's something to question is the three million that's on the school side, that's a question for the school that I'm sure they would be.
Right, 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 because it it, that's money that they're. They've been appropriated. Okay, that's money that they're making a budget and they're not spending the entire amount of their budget. That's the reserve fund. The restricted. Is the growth in the revenue categories.
Right. That nine hundred thousand part of that. Has come from under. Undershooting our actual. Uh, intake. Now, I mean. We're always gonna want to be more conservative than aggressive, because the consequences of. Overdoing it, that means that what are we gonna do to pay for the schools? And it can be board policy of how much of a reserve plus restricted. You would like to keep. Um, just like we have financial policies of how much. We have, um.
Well, that would be in theory if if we project it in any, kind of like Mr. Ashcraft was talking about, we pre, we project a meal's tax. As Travis was saying, even if it's aggressive, if it goes all with that. Then. It still goes to the schools as it is.
It goes to the school restricted.
And it's in the studying in these funds. That they don't seem to be willing to use.
And that their willingness to use might be another question for the board to the school.
Right. I mean, I I know they've used, and and maybe we need to to look at the historical trend in the restricted fund especially. Um, because that's, that's the one where we're, we're talking about this immediate issue, although we should probably ask questions about the reserve fund too. Um, and how long did it take? Stephen just asked me how long it took to build up that nine hundred thousand. I don't know. I also don't know how much of it, I don't recall how much of it we've appropriated back to them to use. I know it's a bunch.
Mm hmm.
Um, for some things that have come up. I mean, it might be more than a million I can remember over the last couple of years. For. Things that have come up. That might be wrong, but I I remember it being a jag of money that we appropriated out of the restricted to them. So it would give us an idea of how much. Is getting banked on those revenues. And and try to give us an idea of what to shoot for with these, with these projections. You heard me ask about projections last week, and I'm, I haven't, I've been all over the world, so I had a chance to really kind of sit down and. Talk to you about what I'm thinking here, but just, well, you know, an example of a conservative projection here is food and beverage tax is a great example. We've got actual realized revenue in F Y twenty two of, you know, five hundred twenty one thousand. We're projecting four hundred eighty thousand. That typically you would say is a good conservative projection. However, since all of that's going to schools, should we be a little bit more aggressive and project maybe up? Should we be a little bit more aggressive and project maybe up to five hundred or even five hundred and ten or fifteen thousand dollars? And, and allocate that as, as money they can use, because otherwise, you know, if we end up getting five hundred fifty thousand dollars in, in revenue this year. Or five hundred eighty thousand, I just wanna use round numbers, that's a hundred thousand dollars going to the restricted fund. So th- those, those were the opportunities with projections that I, that I was seeing, just as we're trying to wrap our heads around. Growth in the special tax district funds and how do we best capture that?
Right, we don't want those funds to be growing and whether or not the overages come to us. Or go to the school, that means that the opportunity was missed to appropriately adjust the property.
Exactly, exactly, well, uh, let's just be crystal clear, we want them to be growing, but we don't wanna be undershooting those numbers as they grow. Cause that's where we get.
Right, the fund balances, I, is what we don't want.
Yes, right, we don't want the fund balances to be growing and, and, I mean, we want healthy fund balances, but we want, you know. Having a million dollars in this, in the restricted fund is, is to me telling me that we're, we're being a little bit too conservative in our projections, so.
Um, and then, I, I do think it's. A little bit of an argument that um, economic development does help the special tax district because that's where. That's helping the non-property tax base grow. As food for thought, um, there are other ways to kind of. To fine tune the budget, like Mr. Ashcraft was saying with um, yeah, most jurisdictions. Meals tax goes towards something special, B poll, or at least portions of that get allocated to something in particular. And that guarantees you that you have kind of the right tax for the right. Service. And guarantees funding for those things to continue and right now, we're kinda missing that because it's just, okay, it's all going to the school and then we just see general fund. But I mean, there's other ways to kinda figure out how. Uh, how to divvy up the funding stream so that it's like it's coming from those non-property taxes. But in the end, we're trying to get the property tax rates to be the appropriate rate so that can't all D one through five are paying. Their fair share into that county wide.
That last year is a really good example, cause I think the schools asked us for seven hundred thousand dollars last year.
Eighty, eighty, eighty.
Well, I, I think it was, uh, uh, maybe it was the year before, but there was a year where they had an ass, alright, and we were struggling to figure out how we get there and that's when. Right, me and you and Natasha started having this discussion about split levy and, and where these funds are allocated. And we, we had our first kinda sit down about the split levy, the intent, all that stuff, and the schools ended up, we ended up having to allocate like another one point one million to them or something like that. Um, so right there was what I said, it demonstrates that the rates aren't balanced correctly, um, because. The funds are, you know, from districts two, three, five are, are doing, doing the job of supporting schools. Um, but we're struggling.
Right.
So something needs to, it changed and that's, that's what we've proposed doing this year, that's the reason that we propose doing it this way, because. The, the, the cleanest, most accurate, and again, to me, the most philosophically consistent with the split levy way to do it is the way that we. Proposed doing it this, this well.
Last year, this current year.
Precise.
Uh, if there is wiggle room, I would say that it is in option three, but that is not as clean or as philosophically. Aligned with the split levy. But that really does have to do. With where you stand on that. That those are funds that came from the special tax district, they would be going to a countywide purpose, it's not gonna affect that tax rate that year. But it could at some point, because you use those restricted funds, the, the school's gonna use them for something eventually, you're gonna have to pay that service on it or. It's gonna be part of a capital expense.
I'm going to use the restricted funds with the shortage that they say.
They can, they can, we can.
It's, can we do it, or you're saying?
You can, only we can do it because they don't have the power to tax.
Yeah, um, the restricted funds.
Take the ones we have now.
Well, all, all we can do is give them access to it, alright, you gotta remember that.
And what they do.
How they spend it.
Cause we, we all, I. Cause they did that last year, we gave them a certain amount, told them where it was supposed to go and they went and ended up giving a fourteen percent raise to the administration that they're still paying now till it's contract run down. But we never sat down and listed and said, you got to spend.
Cause we don't, we don't exercise that power, we, we, we've chosen not to exercise that power and I think for good, well, I think for good reason, we don't, it's an elected school board. But there's arguments to be made one way or the other, I've always still stood by the idea that the school board, we allocate the money to the school board. It's, it's their responsibility to their stakeholders, well, it's their responsibility to their stakeholders to spend the money wisely.
Yeah, citizens blame us for not doing it, which is what they're doing now.
We, we've also, the political reality, the fact that school boards don't have the ability to tax.
Yeah.
They get to ask us to, to levy the tax on their behalf and when, then, when we say we'd rather not, they, they, uh. Yeah, but.
How much excess are we talking about here, can't we just rearrange it now, I mean, what are you thinking?
That's, well, that's what I'm saying is that, I'm even thinking like, as we sit here right now, it would be worth it to take another look at our projections for this year, okay? And maybe uh, update some of those special tax district numbers to numbers that we're comfortable with.
I know we were a little more aggressive than we have been in years past, but we can take another look.
I would agree, but I think there's still room in there, um, just what I'm looking at based on, and, and maybe if, if you guys could get me like the last five years of these revenues. Uh, you know, I can maybe point you to where I think there's some opportunities. You know, and that, that could solve a couple of problems, A, it would stop the bleeding into the restricted fund, um, it would. Obviously allocate more money towards their purpose, um, which could only make them and their stakeholders more happy and it would give us. More, uh, it would make it more palatable to do the rate adjustment, alright, that we propose, that I think is the right thing to do. Um, if we're funding as much of their need as we possibly and reasonably can. And we're also doing the thing that we need to do, which is the rebalancing of the.
Do you think you had a key word in there, the reason?
Right, 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 no, I mean, I'm gonna say, look, I, I just think that, um. I think it would help them out and I think it would help us out.
Are you opposed to using any, any of the overage to fund their request?
Well, no, I mean, I just think the only, the problem that you run into there is.
I know, it's just like use unassigned.
Exactly, it's, it's.
But there could be, there could be one time uses that they have been there budget request now.
Well, right, and, and I think maybe just from a, like, let's, let's face facts people thing, let's, let's look at that. Reserve fund that they've built too, I mean, you know, cause the fact of the matter is that they have been making budgets and making requests. We've been funding those requests and they've been banking an awful lot of money, um, so, um. We, we wanna have the ability though, I, I think we would all agree to have, you know, a capital fund that they can utilize, um, that's, that's. On their end, there's some benefit to that, but there's four million dollars too much.
And that was as of, what, a year ago, right?
Yeah, that's, uh. FY twenty two hasn't been, uh, completed, uh, we don't know what it is.
I'm just, you know, I don't understand their reasoning. I think that if they have the funding to make up the difference, I don't, I don't see what the problem is and just like what you just said, that, that. That fund is probably even more than the three point nine at this point. Have, do you think they have not considered it or?
I don't think they would use it for the purposes.
A very, a very large problem is all of us went on the record numerous times in these board meetings saying that. We were, what we were gonna do with the rate. Period. You know, and it was suggested when we had the joint meeting for us to, uh. Advertise a higher rate. And they have funds, they, you know, they have the funding for, for what they need.
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing, the reality is that they're. They're not gonna wanna use that money for their purpose.
I, I think it's the push that we do and, and we leave the rate at what it's at. By the time here. Unless you can come up with something more. You know, looking at it again. And they can cover it with what they got. At least a portion, it won't be but a portion of.
I just like to find a way to, to keep the, the, the money in citizens' pockets and not sitting in some fund somewhere. How we do that, some of that stuff hurts my head, but that's the basic premise that I want.
And I, I agree, uh, and doing it with that, that funding, the three point nine, a four point over, four point one, whatever it is now. Can do that.
Is it unreasonable to, to adjust this on a. On a bi, uh, semi annual basis? We've always talked about that, being able to adjust things.
Oh, never the.
I, the rate you can really, I mean, you can do every year when you set the rate.
Every, every six months unreasonable? As inflation or. Things change.
That's, that's all, that's all state code, now we have the budget within the confines of what we're allowed to do and we, 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 uh, you know. Tax rate set annually, that's your tax rate from calendar year.
We can change the personal property.
Mm-hmm, we, we changed that, but not before we set, remember, we adopt that rate and it's for the calendar year and then it's collected also off of that calendar year, so. We adjusted it off of what we had initially set, but we lowered it, which we're allowed to do, we did it before the taxes were actually levied.
Anything else?
Sure. Yeah, well, this has been sitting in the back of my mind. Were food taxes, for example, originally for fire EMS, is that a rumor or is that true?
It was never on the ballot, it was, um. I don't, I don't remember, it was a long time ago that they instituted the food and beverage tax, I think I might have been a resident of Williams, the city Williamsburg for that one year that they did that, it was back in like, it was six or seven. Like the one or two years that I didn't vote in King William, but I was somewhere else, um, but I, I, I remember there being some grumblings about, they said that it was all gonna go to fire, but I remember then. Like I was shown what was on the ballot. And it was not. The, the part of the ballot.
Someone handed me a, a copy of a referendum, I think, actually I asked Alison about it a year or two ago and it had on there. Um, might have been law enforcement, fire, number of other, including the school, um. So from what I remember, it had it on there, from what Alison had, the registrar had, um. But there's still ways, you know, even if that isn't coming straight here, if it's offsetting a county tax. Can we make sure we're collecting that for the right purpose?
Alright, so the action is for staff to look at some formulas and the data, do some projections and then maybe come back. Next Monday. Reasonable.
But with, with the focus of, of making them utilize their funds, but for what they need. Uh, to do this salary increase. That's actually just that part is they only need what, two hundred and fifty or something in that range?
I think that was it.
Yeah. Two hundred and fifty and, and.
Suffice it to say that they could get their five percent by doing, using their reserve. They could get their, uh, they preferred, they said, seven percent to match adjacent counties. I believe it was a statement I heard.
So is West Point doing a five percent or a seven percent?
West Point is doing a five percent uh, increase in salary for all school employees. Uh, level funding and level funding for last. Anything else on the?
Is that proposed, was West Point proposed?
Anybody got anything else, y'all got anything on budget items?
No, I, I would go back to Mr. Moore's, uh, response, I'll bring it back next week, we have a, a public hearing on the budget. Would it make more sense to bring it back at the April tenth work session? Okay, um, where we could maybe, we would have a reaction and, and, and see where, uh.
Cause anything that we do is not gonna be done in this, in this budget here.
I just hate to, uh, to complicate, you know, next, next week is for the citizens to speak out if they should do so on the budget. Let's hear what they have to say and then April tenth, we can, uh, we can regroup and, uh, heading towards making some decisions. That's okay, or we can even have a, we can even do something on April third if you wanted to. I know you don't want to, so, so that's why April tenth is the next work session, so we can leave it there. Okay, that sound good?
Alright, anything else gentlemen on the board, but, but like. Alright, I think I started with Ed last.
You did.
No, I've got it in my head. That was the same old request, we always have to think about. Internet, I said, I do finally see some cable going up, like Rappahannock's putting some up down six hundred, it's. The big cables getting put up, so when, like you said, they're gonna go from the pole to the people's yard, whether underground or. Overground or wherever they were gonna decide. It looks, I mean, I hope it's getting there and. That's all, thanks everybody for coming, I was hoping, I'm glad that we did set the rate as low as we did, I think we had a good, good budget. Sessions, all the sessions this year, I thank Steve and Mr. Ashcraft and staff for all the work they did on.
Thank you.
Alright, so yeah, I mean, we, we'll talk more about this, I, I gotta carve out some time to put a phone call into you, but we'll, we'll talk about. Um, what, what my ideas are with projections and we'll see if we can figure out, cause I, I think, again, I think there's opportunities to. Help them out a little bit and, um. Receive revenue from this year, but, uh, like Stephen, yeah, internet, whenever we get update on that, at this point in time, just an email update from the last thing they've got. From us is, is fine, I think we're still, well, they were here in February, is that, and so. Yeah, if we could have them here maybe by, uh, maybe in. Uh, May or June for another update, you know, we'll be halfway there by then, it would have, uh, with the, you know, completion, supposed to be twelve months out from, uh, January. Um, that's it, otherwise, see you next week.
Mr. Ashcraft, are we, is, uh, are we doing anything to encourage people to form groups to. Pick up trash and litter on, uh, state, state maintained roads or?
I mean. We've talked a lot about it, um, there's a number of roads. That are adopted by groups and individuals in the county and we have made a plea that, uh. They pick up that responsibility that they've asked for.
I think it's, I think it's probably some citizens out there that would be. Happy to do so, I told you earlier today that, uh, a friend of mine, Clyde Christmas. Saturday and Sunday was on Manfield Road for most of the day, by himself. He picked up the two, uh, caution signs, bags and, uh. Great guy, was, you know. Picked up a lot of trash and, uh, I think that if we could encourage groups, I think it would be. A very good time.
And, and I reported at the last meeting, we're about to execute a contract. With a company to, uh. Really dive into the problem, hit the main arteries first and then go out to the other areas where, uh, where need has been identified. And, uh, hopefully that will, that will get us through this first wave and then. We'll see how much of that we need as we move forward with, obviously with V doc, uh, having the grass cutting. When they do cut grass, they do, uh, they do pick up litter as well, so.
And I also wanna thank everybody for coming here and everybody on this board fully, fully supports the schools, it's just. We get blamed for everything. To be accused of otherwise was kind of, yeah, and, and, uh, I took it as an insult, some of the ta- tactics that we use, group emails. Uh, I reached out to a couple, a couple of people, emailed them back and told them to call me, I'd like to give them all the details, so hopefully the word will get out. The sentiment of this board is not to hurt the schools. You know, it's that money that's sitting in those reserve funds is taxpayers' money also. And as I said earlier, this board had uh had stated many times that, you know, we we wanted to equalize that rate. Because it was gonna be such a such a shock if we didn't. So then the schools asked. That we increase the rate and they have funds. So that's that's where I'm at. It's I I don't want it to be any hard feelings. And thank everybody for coming.
Yeah, but the trash, seen a lot of orange bags out there. Still a lot of trash to be picked up. Now's the time to do it. Ditches are still clean from brush and honeysuckle and whatnot, so. Hope to see those continue. And I believe I did send everybody the Breeze Line notice that. Their FCC R doc contract that they're beginning the stage, initial stages of walkout, which means they'll be. Uh, driving out, uh, recording polls, whether they need to be replaced. Location, so that that is a really critical first step in their portion of building out and completing broadband in King Wayne. So we'll keep uh keep pushing them to get as much information as possible and that that would hold for, in fact, I learned of another uh. Uh, lady this afternoon that uh I thought she would be in the all points. She's not. She's in the R doc, so. Continuing that work. Thanks for coming. Thanks staff again for working hard. Mr. Hudgens, I actually almost understands what levy now. We got a few loose ends, but I'm getting there.
As complicated as it is. Uh, dealing with the uh trash and V doc will supply you with vest and with the orange bags and a pickup tool. If you contact them, um. I'm just saying it'll do that. Also, I've got to bring up something and that doing some figures and talking to the public. Equalized rate that we're projecting out doesn't mean that you're not gonna have a tax increase, uh. Uh, what I'm figuring up about average is gonna be about fourteen percent in town, about twenty percent countywide. Uh, but looking at property values that have gone up around fifty percent or more. You know, you gotta look at that. I I thought when I heard some of the folks saying it it was weren't gonna pay anymore. I didn't think that would ever gonna happen. Uh, and it's not. If you sit down and figure the rates up, um, fifty eight cents is probably about the best we can do. And I I think it's a good rate coming from where we did, uh. And uh if they can lower it a little bit more, they they will, but I think it would probably be on the school side right now. If 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 he could find it, but you may not be able to find it. But do thank everybody for coming out and uh. We uh next meeting is Monday, March twenty seventh at seven P M. Right, yes, I have a motion.
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Muskauski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood. Chairman Hackett.